Welcome to the Missoula Democrats' Monthly Meeting. We're pleased today to host a candidate forum for the City Council election this fall. We invited all the candidates, and most of them in the major districts. We will use the results of this forum in many ways. One way will be to post it on the website, missoulademocrats.org, so the community can view it. It will also be rebroadcast on MCAT at some point. We also will use this candidate forum to determine who the Democratic Party will endorse for the election this fall. The reason we endorse the nonpartisan race is because we can use our resources to help candidates get elected, and we like to support candidates that have the democratic values that we share. So, tonight's forum will consist of short presentations by each candidate, followed up by some questions answered from the audience. If you would, pass around the cards that you can write your questions down on, and Willis here will select the questions for asking after the candidates present. So, the candidates will have two minutes as an introduction for each one of them, and then there will be a two-minute reply for each question from each candidate, and a one-minute conclusion at the end of the forum. So, without further ado, let me start with Ward 1, and let me introduce Jordan Hess. Oh, that's right. We have shoes from Ward 1. Excuse me. I'm a little ahead of myself here. Let's start with Patrick Madison. And Patrick, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, and watch the clock. You have a 30-second warning.
Okay. My name's Patrick Madison. I'm Ward 1. I live on 600 Cherry Street. I am a social worker in town. I work with adults with developmental disabilities, so I help them access the community developed services. I'm a director for the agency. It's Job Opportunity Based Services. I have a social work degree from the University of Montana. Lived in Missoula for about 10 years. Been involved in many different agencies as far as social services go, which is kind of what I'm, obviously, my interest is, is looking at the community as accessibility, primarily, and access to all the things that we all get to enjoy here in Missoula. I've also worked for Watson's Children's Shelter, Aware, and done volunteer work for CASA and the Missoula Public Library. So, I'm excited to be running for City Council. I did apply three years ago when there was a vacancy in Ward 2. I think the council made a good decision when they chose Cynthia for that, and I just look forward to serving Missoula and the Rattlesnake population.
Great. Next, we have, how many of us? Brian von Losberg.
You got it.
Okay, excellent. Also on Ward 1, which, as you mentioned, is the Rattlesnake and also includes the parts of the North Side. Please.
Right. So, my name's Brian von Losberg. My wife, Genevieve, and our 15-month-old daughter, Austin Rose, live over in the North Side, right on the corner of Howland Mitchell, right across from the Head Start School over there. So, if you're over for any of the Missoula outdoor cinema, feel free to wrap on a window. We've had that happen before. Used to live in the Lower Rattlesnake on Jackson Street for several years. Came to Missoula back in 2004 for graduate school at the university in the Environmental Studies Program, and was there for a few years, getting a master's, and then moved away for a couple of years. And my wife and I moved back about four or five years ago. And I'm most recently the executive director at an organization called ARO, the Alternative Energy Resources Organization. It's about, almost a 40-year-old membership-based organization located in Helena but statewide in its membership, and it addresses sustainable lag in food system issues, as well as renewable energy and energy efficiency and energy conservation issues. It was a real natural fit working at ARO, and I've been the director there for the past two-plus years and was on the board for about a year, year and a half before that. But in that capacity, I got involved with Missoula's Conservation and Climate Action Plan, and I've referred to that in some of my responses, and that's been near and dear to my heart for the last 18 months, going on two years, actually. By way of some other background, I've got an undergraduate degree in mechanical engineering, which also kind of leads into my interest in that area, from Stanford out in the Bay Area. Just really excited to serve the North Side and the Rattlesnake and the city in general, and appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Great. Thank you. Next is Jordan Hess, who is running in Ward 2, which I now have right. And that is Mill Creek and parts of the North Side. Please.
Yeah. My name's Jordan Hess, and I live over on the West Side, and I want to thank the Central Committee for the opportunity to be here. I think this is a really great opportunity to kind of get to know people and get my ideas out there. I came to Missoula in 2005 to study at the University of Montana, studied geography with an emphasis on community planning and environmental planning, and I really enjoyed the area and decided to stick around. And I've been, since that time, involved in a number of different community groups. And my interest has really, has really spanned, I guess, a number of issues, but I really have gravitated towards planning and transportation issues. Served on the Missoula Urban Transportation District Board for a few years, serve on the, or am a member of the Missoula Advocates for Sustainable Transportation, and try to get involved in those issues. I'm also an active member of the Montana Public Employees Association, and enjoy being active in that. And I guess really, I, you know, as I said, I've just really come to love Missoula and am looking for a way to give back. I, too, applied for the vacant seat in Ward 2, and I've, a few years ago, and I've always held that interest, and it's always been on the back of my mind for when the opportunity might come up again. Thanks.
Thank you. Jordan, next is Emily Bentley from Ward 3. Ward 3 is the university area of the Slant Streets. Emily.
And the Riverfront Neighborhood. So, thanks again for having me. I've been involved with this organization for a while. I was the vice chair from 2009 to 2011, and I'm the recent captain for St. Joe, Senior Citizens 1. So, just a little bit of my background that maybe you guys don't know about. I'm the state campaign manager for Compassionate Choices Montana, which works to expand choice and care at the end of life. And I'm also on the Board of Commissioners for the Missoula Housing Authority, where we work to advance basic human rights, and I've sort of gained a better understanding of finance and the importance for affordable housing in our community. And this week, I have to just put a plug in. I've been all day at the fairgrounds doing a donations drive for the victims of the Vantage Villa fire, and we decided to extend it until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. So, if you, between 8:00 and 10:00 tomorrow, have furniture you want to donate, I hope that you'll bring it by. We're in the llama barn. So, I have my bachelor's in history and my master's degree in public administration, which I think will serve me well. And I also am the former communications coordinator for a civil engineering firm, where I learned a lot about growth issues that Missoula faces, city planning, and the importance of community and public involvement. My first job out of college was running the flagship program at Hellgate High School, so I can talk about prevention later if we get a chance. And just in general, I really like to work with nonprofits in the community. Some of my favorite are Forward Montana, the Big Sky Documentary Film Festival, Clark Forest Coalition, and just, there's so many. And so, I look forward to continuing those partnerships.
Thank you, Emily. Next is Annalise Haddall.
Haddall.
Thank you. From Ward 5, running for Ward 5, which is the South Hills and Miller Creek and filling me in on any other places that I'm missing.
No, you've got it covered. You're good. I'm Annalise Haddall. I moved to Missoula, Montana, in, I believe, 1987, with my parents, obviously, at that age. My father was in the military for 21 years, and he is a native Montanan himself, and so we would periodically come back here. We had a house in the Rattlesnake for most of those years, and either we'd go to school or leave, go to Europe, come back, et cetera. So, when he retired, he wanted to live back in Missoula. He worked extensively at the university with the Vratzi program. So, we came back. I finished high school, and my government teacher's here, actually, in the audience. And I went to the University of Montana for a while, and then transferred to the University of Montana Western, where I got my teaching degree. I taught for a very short amount of time, and I have since moved into media. I sell media advertising. I also have my real estate license. I like lots of activities, so I'm a busy gal. I am married to a city fireman, and we have two children. I have a stepson that's 12, and then we have a three-year-old, who is a handful, but he's a great kid. I love Missoula. I think it's one of, having been in a lot of places, I can tell you it's one of the greatest places I've ever lived. So, I'm really excited to participate on this level, so I appreciate you having me. Thanks.
Thanks, Annalise. Last but not least at all is Marilyn Marler, who is running in Ward, for reelection in Ward 6, which is CS Porter in west of Russell. Marilyn's been on the council for what?
Eight years.
Eight years, is it? Oh, my gosh. That's curious. Council President, too. Thank you. So, please, Marilyn.
Thanks again for having the forum and for having the opportunity to come and talk to you all. I know a lot of people in the room, but just for people I haven't met yet, I've lived in Missoula for 19 years. I've been on City Council for eight of those years, and I've enjoyed it a lot, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to run again, and I'll tell you why in a minute. But I work at, in addition to being on City Council, I work at the university as a botanist, and the job I do for the university is managing the natural areas, like Mount Sentinel and the M Trail, and that is where I discovered that I enjoy problem-solving with people who are not happy all the time, because there's a lot of problems in natural areas management. It brings up a lot of values, and, you know, there's a lot of conflict resolution there. And it's how I got interested in government politics also. My husband and I live on 8th Street, near the Good Food Store, and we're both involved in a lot of local nonprofits, including but not limited to the Montana Natural History Center, Home Resource, Montana Native Plant Society. I won't list them all. We're also cereal adopters of elderly pets from the Humane Society. We love them so much. One of the reasons I am really excited to run for reelection to City Council is because a lot of the interests that I have in city government are long-term ones, and we're just, some of them are starting to come to fruition. For example, bike ped infrastructure. I like that we redid the sidewalk funding. Stewardship of natural resources is something that takes a long time, and probably the longest-term project ever, Third and Russell Street. I want to see it happen. And I'm also a real strong proponent of civility in local government. So, thank you again for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Marilyn. So, first of all, let me thank all the candidates for filling out the questionnaire that we have posted, the answers on our website. And so, if you go to missoulademocrats.org, you can see even more extensive information that each candidate is providing. So, if there are any questions from the audience, please hand them to Willis here, and I will ask them first of all. There we go. So, I'll just read this as much as I can read it. "Today, Mountain Line announced that it would place requests to increase its levy on the ballot in order to fund 15-minute service between the Mall, Reserve Street, and downtown." It's a good question. Ready with, you know what's coming here? Do you support the levy, which is about $19 per $100,000 of home value? $19 per 1,000, or per 100,000, sorry. Oh, let's just start and go this way.
Sure. So, I absolutely support this levy. I think that transit is not only a social issue, but it also affects our budget and our infrastructure. So, not only does it help elderly and disabled and other people who might not have the means to, on a vehicle, or pay for gas if they do, it also increases the lifecycle of our roadways, which means that we don't have to replace them as often. So, you know, to me, it's a no-brainer, absolutely.
Yes, I'd support that as well. The clientele that I work with relies heavily on public transportation, and the increasing in frequency of public transportation is a great need for most people, whether it's getting to employment or getting to some recreational facility with their family of some sort. Again, I think it reduces congestion, it increases Missoula's move to be pedestrian and bike and bus savvy individuals, and I believe that that's an important way for us to move and continue to fund things that support that initiative. So, yes, I would support that.
I would support it as well. I would definitely, I would like there to be a little more discussion as to what that actually looks like, what the full amount goes to, what. I understand that it's making some routes faster, and there's going to be more frequency to that, but I would like to have a public forum, again, where you could have people weigh in. For example, in Miller Creek, accessibility to a bus is very limited to where we live. So, for me, it would be hard to ask my ward to pay more if we don't have accessibility to it on that level. But I understand the importance of people, in example, you know, elderly and disabled, that that's an absolute need on their part, so.
Yeah. In principle, definitely would support it. I'd also be interested in understanding more details about the rationale. Part of it, just as an education for myself, I'm a strong proponent of public transportation. I use public transportation, especially when I was in graduate school here, used Mountain Line extensively. Frequency of service improvements are good. Accessibility of those services, improving accessibility, those are good things. I'd like to learn more about how you go about prioritizing those particular changes, improvements to the service over other things, but in principle, I would definitely support it.
I would absolutely support that levy, and I have a little bit of a bias, because I, on the Mountain Line board, helped lay the groundwork to make the levy a possibility. So, I'm coming from that angle. But I think that the, and I answered this in the written questionnaire as well, that I believe that in looking at taxes, it's important to look at the benefit versus the cost to residents. And this is, Mountain Line has time and time again shown that they can provide a tremendous benefit for a very low cost. And I think that this really comes, you can really see this when you look at the current plan to kind of focus inward and focus on core service. Look at the land use downtown, and look at the land use at the university, where there's just no room for additional parking without building structured parking. And the economics are such that it's far cheaper to provide bus service for someone than it is to provide a, suspend a piece of concrete in the air for a parking space for them. So, with that in mind, I would definitely support it.
I support it, too, for all the reasons already stated.
Excellent. So, for the next round of questions, you can get started. The next question is, since several of you have responded on the questionnaire, that you would listen to your ward, what your constituents wanted, but given that no, often no two Missoulians may agree on any given topic, how would you balance the different views and desires of your constituents? For example, as a resident of the Rattlesnake, we had several people that were adamantly opposed to the sewer and others that were desperate for it. So, a similar situation has occurred with the proposed rebuilding of Hillville Way. How do you resolve that kind of conflict? Marilyn?
That's a really good question, and it comes up on City Council, and been in that situation before. And I think it's possible to be too literal in that and say, "Well, I got, you know, five letters in support and, you know, six letters against, so obviously I have to go against." I think it's important to listen to the different perspectives, hear where people are coming from. It's okay to disagree with some constituents, and then on difficult issues, you have to vote or do what you think is best, and be very open about it, and tell people what you're doing and why. And then if people don't like what you've done, they will not support your bid for reelection, and they will, you can continue to be in a conversation with those people. I see it as an ongoing process, not an issue where, you know, we take a tally every time and then go with a simple majority. It's a very good question and not an easy thing to do.
Yeah. You know, I think we've got, I suppose, 120-some, 100, you know, days until the ballots are due in, and I think that the important thing to remember is that that is not the time to stop listening to the constituents. And so, you know, in the next several months, I know many of us will be, you know, we'll be outdoors, we'll be meeting people, we'll be learning about issues, and that conversation just needs to continue on into the future. That said, I agree with Marilyn that there would come a point when you have to listen to the arguments and just synthesize some sort of opinion based on, based on the logic and the arguments of it. And you may at times offend a few people by your decisions, but in being able, in having open communication and being able to explain and demonstrate why you did what you did, that's, I think that's the correct path.
Yeah. I think building on some of those answers, active listening, getting the viewpoints from both sides extensively, I really, really resonate about, you know, not, it's not a vote of six, I heard from six people here and five people here. I enjoy debating issues with people, and I think after listening to those arguments and listening to pros and cons, and then synthesizing that and trying to articulate a position, being really open about communicating that position, and I find myself, when I, you know, go through the process of really trying to nail down how I feel or position on something and articulating it, I'll discover more nuances and more aspects to it. That's helpful. And then I enjoy taking, you know, a position like that to folks that are going to be in opposition to it, or theoretically, and things in the past I've dealt with, and hearing response to their position. I think it helps me flesh out a stronger position in that case.
What they all said, no, I'm just kidding. Along those lines, you know, I think, just for me personally, I have to remind myself in situations where there is a debate or there is something at question, whether or not I agree with it at that moment, I have to take kind of my ego out of it, and once I'm able to do that, again, unless you say, "Okay, six people said this and five people said that," really, you just have to say, "Okay, at the end of the day, I know I have great common sense. I know that I can be a reasonable person. I can look at this, whether it benefits me or not, what's the best choice overall for my ward?" And so, I think it's, ultimately, it's up to that, you know, everything's going to be different, and a lot of times, I think it's a great opportunity to change your mindset as well, and to be in a position where you can actually look at something completely different, through different eyes, and so, thus making you a much better representative as well.
Yes, I agree with everything that's been said so far, you know, keeping an open communication and not being afraid of an opposition. I think we all learn a little bit more every time that somebody stands up and opposes another idea. That's what politics is all about, and that's how we grow, that's how we come up with the best possible solution. And then, at the end of the day, you know, you're on council, you're working with your council members for the greater good of the community as a whole, and you're working with city officials who, you know, somebody in your ward might not have all the information that you have, because they didn't participate in all the boards, so you would, you know, make your judgment call based on how you feel and the work and the research that you've done to support the issue.
Yeah, I think the answers have been very good, and I agree with what everyone said. I would just add that, you know, in the end, there's a reason why we vote. There's a reason why we have democracy, and it's because we can't do everything by consensus. It would be really great if we could. I wish we could, but we can't, and so we vote, and you have to, you have to make a decision, and some of them are hard. And by running for City Council, you know, by stepping up for this position, you know, it's because I'm confident that I can make rational decisions and listen to people and really understand where they're coming from, try to remove my own, or at least recognize my own conflict of interest, and vote and move forward, so.
Now that we've finished that round of questioning, I will let you all know that that was asked by a former City Council person who knew how to ask the tough questions. Next question is about mountain water. They're, they announced that they want to increase the rates. Do you support that or not? And secondly, do you think that Missoula should own its own water company like other communities do? Emily, please.
Okay. So, I anticipated this question, and I did call and speak with Mayor Engen today about it, just to get a brief update, so that I could be informed when I spoke with you. And he is very confident that, you know, we can still purchase the municipal water system. I am, of course, very much in favor of that, and will do whatever it takes to do that. It is of vital, vital importance. So, we have, we have an agreement with the Carlisle Group that if the city of Missoula brings a reasonable offer to them, that they have to take it. And I see no reason yet to think that they are not playing, you know, honestly. And so, it's just a matter, according to John Engen, and I believe him, of timing and patience. So, I'm going to do what it takes and wait right now.
Yeah. I think I would definitely need a little more information on that. I think that there's a lot, obviously, entailing. I do support Missoula owning its own water system, but, you know, that, there's a lot that goes into that as well, and I would, you know, without being egotistical, I'm not that informed on that position, so that would be something that I would work hard to be more informed on before supporting or not supporting.
I won't be able to put this eloquently, but I feel like it would hurt a lot less to raise rates if I knew the city owned it than it would be for an independent group that doesn't even, they're not even in the state. So, for me, I think it's important that we own it. I think it's part of our infrastructure. It's important. It's, we're going to get a lot more attention. We're going to get a much quicker response, I believe, if we owned it. I think it's, I think it's our responsibility, so.
Just to check in, Dave. The first part of your question was, "Do we support the rate increase?" Correct. So, I don't know at this point. I'm aware that they've made the petition for the rate increase, and I understand the need for capital improvements and rate increases to support that, but I haven't looked at the details of what specifically that's going into. So, I'm not sure at this point, though. I understand it's a business, that's the way it often works. I wholeheartedly support and made this a key issue in my questionnaire response, the city owning its water system. I spent a number of years in the private sector. I'm naturally sort of, I am always looking, a little cynical about these agreements and such. I'm really appreciative of the work that Clark Forest Coalition and the mayor did in getting us to where we are with the agreement and putting us in a position to acquire, you know, a municipal water system. I think it's an incredibly important issue, and it's one of the things that I think I can bring some experience to bear on making it happen down the road, so.
Start to sound like a broken record here, but I absolutely support getting the water system into public ownership, and I think that there's a number of reasons for that that we don't need to go into too much detail about, but one of them is just the bonding authority that the municipality would have to, you know, to make system improvements over, you know, that a company may not have. And as we look to the, as we look to the future, as water becomes scarcer and conditions change, it just becomes more and more critical for us to have that in public ownership. And I do support, I think, I think that the mayor made a very, an effort in good faith, and I think that it, as Emily stated, it'll take some patience, and it'll take some time and some dedication, and we can make it happen down the road. As to the rate increase, I am aware of the petition for the rate increase as well, but I don't, I don't have enough details to comment on that.
I completely support public ownership of the water company, and I hope that it happens sooner rather than later. A lot of good reasons have already been stated, so I won't go over them, but one of, well, I think even this one was stated. Water conservation is an important one. Part of me says, "Well, if they raise the rates, maybe people will be better at conserving water," but I don't think that's why they're raising the rates. So, I'm not sure. I heard today about the petition for the rate increase, but I don't know all the details about it. I'm not just instantly opposed to it, but I'm also not ready to wholeheartedly support everything about it. Thanks for the question.
Okay. Next question is about economic development. Simply, what is the role of the city of Missoula, what is the city of Missoula's role in economic development? Go ahead and take the first one.
We're not going to start in the middle, ever?
Ever.
That's too confusing. I couldn't do that.
Okay. I'll go. I think that the important role of the city government for economic development is providing a good city, providing good infrastructure, good parks, good place for people to live, good services, and then that can attract businesses and reasons why people want to live here and continue to invest in the community. I am a fan of the tax implement financing that we do. I think that that has helped with economic development in place in parts of town, and I just completely lost my thought, so maybe I ought to pass to the next person. I apologize.
I apologize for that.
At City Club yesterday, the governor was talking about economic development and what people, I'm going to get in trouble for paraphrasing the governor on TV here, I think, but what people look for when citing a business. And of course, there's the tax issues, but then beyond that, it is, how are the schools? Will it be a nice place to raise my family? And on from there. And I think, as Marilyn said, we need to continue to do a great job of providing top-notch schools, top-notch parks, all of those city services. I think from a business standpoint, I think that the city did a fantastic job with the consolidation of the new Development Services Department. And that's a great example of kind of an efficient one-stop shop for things in the development realm. And I think if we can, if we can think about our services from, through the lens of that success and move forward with that in mind, I think that will serve us well.
Yeah, I'm going to frankly borrow from some of those answers. I think creating a really livable, desirable city, place to live, that businesses want to invest in and be here, educated workforce, bikeability, walkability, public transportation, those sorts of services, the infrastructure to support those services, you know, again, make it a place that businesses want to invest in and do business there and have people engage in those activities.
I too was at the forum yesterday for City Club, and I thought it was interesting that the governor had mentioned the importance of getting Montanans, kids that graduate high school to stay in Montana, to be able to create a place where they want to stay, they can stay. And having left several times and known lots of people who have left several times because they're unable to make a living here, or the type of living that they want to make to sustain, to raise a family. Most try to find a way back, but it seems like that's a real challenge. And I would like, I kind of agree with the governor, I'd like to find a way to make Missoula easier to live in. And that means typically bringing in better jobs, or higher-paying jobs, or more quality jobs. And how you do that and how we can assist in doing that, I'm not completely sure, but that's why you have a group of people altogether come up with ideas like that. So I'm obviously very pro-business, I work with businesses every day. I'd like to see us become more of a liaison for them, so.
Yes, I agree with a lot that's said. I think it's, you know, business is important, obviously, you know, for tax purposes and all that. And I think it's just important that we continue to build the infrastructure that makes Missoula such a wonderful place to live, as we all enjoy, and has been mentioned. But also, you know, really working hard with businesses, making it an attractive place for a business to come to Missoula that meets our standard of what we would like to see out of a business, you know, as far as what they provide to the community and how they conduct business. And, you know, continually supporting our local businesses that continue to grow and making, you know, making it easier on them to pay a wage that keeps an educated person in town instead of looking across the border or going to North Dakota to make a bunch of money. You know, so making it a competitive place that people want to live, people can earn and support their families, and buy a house that's affordable.
But one thing that I think wasn't mentioned, I think we kind of need an all-of-the-above strategy. I like the inside-out and outside-in. I like building, building up our economic sector and businesses, from small businesses from the inside, being a great place to live, and kind of having this, you know, great dynamic culture where people have nightlife and spend their money here. And then also the inside-out kind of approach that came out of the Best Place Project, which is a private-public partnership to attract big businesses with high-paying jobs. So I think we need all of the above. I really like what the Missoula Redevelopment Agency does with, in particular, in my neighborhood, I live on First in between Russell and California Street. It is, you know, the Sonal District, you know, we really worked hard with the private sector for years to redevelop that. Marilyn spoke earlier about Russell Street, you know, the businesses along Russell Street will definitely benefit. You know, these are kind of investments that make it livable and walkable, and, you know, we just keep, just keep on, keep on.
Keep on, yeah.
This next question, I'm not sure if we're going to have a clear answer, but maybe I could just ask anyone who wanted to answer this question, just thread off, maybe somebody knows about it, I don't know if anyone does. But the question is, many Missoulians are interested, are concerned, actually, about the potential for increased coal trains running through the railroad, traffic through town. Is there anybody that has any sense of the role that a local government could take on that issue? I'm not sure if there's a coal train expert in the room here.
We can definitely put pressure on the MRL to step up. You know, if the MRL, which is the Montana Rail Link, is going to be making profit on increased rail, you know, then they should have to, you know, penny up for the increased impact that it's going to have on people in Missoula. For example, the, you know, the crossing at the Rattlesnake. And I know that Brian was about to talk, so it's his ward, so I'm going to, I don't want to spill his thunder. But yeah, I think MRL should have to pay. If they're making money off more, you know, more trains, then they should pay for the impacts, too.
I was just going to mention that I believe Dave Stromeyer kind of led the effort to get the Army Corps of Engineers to look at, you know, impacts all along the routes. And I think on a positive note, you know, there were six terminals planned in the Pacific Northwest. My understanding, and it's a pretty dynamic situation, is that three of those are essentially tabled or are not going to happen, and there's pretty significant pressure on the other ones. So I think actually, I'm not sure I would go that route anymore. I'm not sure we have the biggest bang for the buck in terms of, you know, what we could do as a city in this area. I actually think there's a great opportunity for just some local sort of civic activism. So this is beyond sort of the city council role, but could certainly be involved in documenting. I mean, I imagine most of us have sat at one of those intersections waiting for the trains to go by. We live over on the north side and kind of go to bed to the symphony of coal train, or coal trains of all sorts. And I just think there's a great opportunity there for citizens to document some data and put that to use. I think that might actually be far more effective than some of the more traditional routes of going through some of these agencies.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I live over on the west side, practically in the rail yard. And the, you know, it's anecdotal, but in the summertime, I wipe, I wipe gold dust off the windowsills when the windows are open. And I think that we need to consider as a community the health hazards of people who live in that area. And I don't know what it is that we're able to do about that at this level. But I know that other cities, Bellingham, Washington, other cities along the routes, took their own sort of local activism that fit, you know, that fit the needs of their community. And I'm confident that our community could come up with what, with what, how that would look here, too.
Yeah, I think it would be important to work as a council and reach out to, you know, state legislatures and above to figure out a solution that could help out with that. But also meanwhile, you know, that's obviously, MRL is a huge business for this community and contributes millions of dollars into our community, so it would be important to work with them as well, and I, you know, to come up with a solution that could suffice both sides of the argument.
Before we go to our lightning round? This is a lightning round now. Hold on to your seats. Okay, this is a simple, you have to choose one of these four ideas about a priority that the city you think hasn't addressed, and specifically, just pick one of these four. Okay, so you're just going to go right down and start with Emily. We're going to pick all these four. So which of these four do you think should be a priority in City of Missoula? Police, parks, streets, or sewer? You have to pick just one. It's a tough question. But this would be kind of a question you might face when you're budgeting and that sort of thing. So I'll say, Emily, police, parks, streets, or sewer? Emily?
Right now, I'm going to go with our urban parks.
Okay.
Living in the Rattlesnake, I think I'd choose sewer.
Thanks for not adding firemen to that, by the way. That was really nice of you. So I'm going to go with streets.
Great.
Thanks. Streets.
All?
Streets. Okay.
Two, the answer's two. Parks, at this, at this point.
Great. Okay. Next lightning round question is just in 30 seconds. Please, just give us a brief description of the campaign you plan to win office. Why don't we start with Marilyn, how does that?
A brief overview of the campaign?
Yeah, just a very short idea of what you plan to do this campaign.
Well, I'm running for city council, I'm not running against anybody, because it's going to be the tenor of my campaign. I have, I've done this before, so I have a template, and I, I'm not sure how detailed you want me to hear, you want to hear about this, but I, the issues that are important to me in this campaign are the ones I started off with, and that is continuing to improve in our bike pit infrastructure, continued stewardship of our natural resources, which is everything from the urban forest, which needs a lot of care, to getting the water in public ownership, it's a huge range. And I intend to talk about Third and Russell, and I'm absolutely committed to seeing that make progress, and that's going to be a complex one to work on. And one of my big issues continues to always be civility and local government. It's no place for a bad attitude. We can be civil and we will be.
Thank you. Let me, let me kind of redirect the question just a little bit and say, actually, seriously, specifically, do you plan to go door knocking, do you believe in signs?
Okay, I wasn't sure where you were going.
Just rural, rural concrete, campaign?
I will have a website, I will have yard signs. I'm not sure how much door knocking I will be able to do because I do work at the university 30 hours a week, and that's actually planned to increase. I will do a mailer, because that's a good way to reach some folks. And, yeah, and endorsements do help in this process, and my values are very much in line with the Democratic Party, a member of the Democratic Party, and I'll seek other endorsements as well. Is that more towards the answer? Okay. Do you want to know how many mailings?
Just want to answer the right question. Thanks.
Just want to make sure you've thought this through.
I'm really the same. I have the luxury of not having an opponent. And I think that's an opportunity where I can really go out and talk to people and listen, and so I'm going to do a lot of doors, more for my own education and getting, kind of a getting-to-know-the-ward strategy. But then web, social media, some yard signs, and a mailer. But my strategy will really be on the ground.
Yes, the mailings, there's going to be two. Yard signs, website, Facebook page, as much as I have mixed feelings about Facebook. One-on-ones, I've been doing some of those already and plan to do those throughout the campaign. I'm really excited, actually, about the one-on-ones because they're fantastic learning experiences. The other part of this campaign, I'm realizing, is going back to school in a sense, it's like city council school. And so I've actually really did appreciate some of the questions because it got me to dig into areas of city government and the budgeting that I wasn't otherwise familiar with or only at a certain level. So this has been great. Bryce Bennett is my campaign treasurer, and one of the big advantages of that is that Bryce is an excellent resource to advise on campaigning. And again, I'm really learning in that area, and I appreciate that.
I hopefully will do the same, mailings, signs, et cetera. And as someone had advised me, probably over 1,000 cups of coffee. So that's, that's how I'm going to do it.
Yeah, similar, signs, website, Facebook, utilizing social media, and then just using my friendships and relationships that I've built in the community over the past 10 years to assist with that.
Doors, 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 and more doors. Doors are the only thing that win elections. I will have lit, I've raised almost $5,000. You've seen my endorsements, they take up a whole page, but they're worthless without doors. I mean, I'll be on the doors all summer.
Okay, great. Well, we're almost at the end here. I'm going to give the candidates a chance for one last closing remarks. And in that closing remarks, I would like you to take care of the last question, which is, what is the most important issue that motivated you to run for city council? You just need to say one thing, if you'd like, but I don't want to take away from your time at the end, but just work that into your statement. So where did we start? I think we're going to go just.
How much time do they have?
One minute each. And why don't we just start with Emily?
Okay, well, I'm running for city council. I have a one-year-old who I hope lives here and can afford a home to purchase if he wants in 25 years or whatever. And so I want Missoula to be the special place that it is now in the future, in the long term. And I really feel that being on city council is the best way for me to make that happen. If I had to pick one issue, I would say women's issues, and that would include things like our parks, which women and children use primarily, the gender pay study, overseeing the implement of the agreement with the DOJ, continuing prevention work. So I like how I fit all those issues into one. And then getting more women on the boards and commissioners in our community, they're underrepresented on those boards and commissions, and the city councillor has a lot, can do a lot for that. So that's it.
Well, for me, just running for city council, I've kind of pledged my life to public service, and as a social worker, that's what I do every day. I'm in and out of this community and local businesses on a regular basis, all across town, everywhere I go, helping my consumers. So I really do think that I have an opportunity to really listen to the people of Missoula and especially my ward. You know, there's lots of issues, and we've addressed some of those. One of the ones that I'm really in support of, I'm a married gay man, so that would be a big push for me to see Missoula kind of step forward of, in Montana, as a, as a place that supports that, so.
I am running for city council in Ward Five because I have a vested interest in the city. I more or less grew up here, I have a family here, my husband's employed by the city, and so I like being able to have a voice in that, to be a part of preserving it, the way, the way I grew up and the way it is. It's a fantastic place to live, so. For me, issues, I would like to, I would like to really focus on the business, the private sector and the public sector's relationship. I would like to be able to be a voice for both sides, and to be able to be an educated voice for both sides, and create more cohesion as opposed to the city council being the evil people. So I really hope that I'll be able to do that with a smile, so, thanks.
As I said in my questionnaire, and I've said many times, my wife and I made a really deliberate choice to come here and move to Missoula and raise a family here. And we have this 15-month-old beautiful little girl, and I have become very conscious of how precious time is with her, and I kind of, she's a prism through which I see all sorts of things around the city. And I want to serve on the council to make the city keep being a better, incrementally better place to live. I want to go back quickly and amend and say, doors, 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 as Emily mentioned.
Me, too.
Austin is going to be in a backpack, and we're going to be seeing every part of Ward One and all over the north side in the Rattlesnake, and so I'm looking forward to seeing those of you in that area. In terms of one issue, it, I think, I think it's really important to balance tactical and strategic. And I view infrastructure and services kind of on the tactical side, and those are, I think, the most important things. From a strategic side, I'm really interested, concerned about, and want to be engaged in the mountain water ownership issue. I think it's critically important to the entire city, but specifically to the Rattlesnake. And so I think I've, I've had a life in various industries, private sector, nonprofit sector, public sector, working in program management, and I'm out of time. Thanks for the opportunity.
You know, I feel like the City of Missoula has given so much to me, and I want to give that, I want to give a little piece of that back. When I came to the University of Montana as a student, I just, I just loved it here and decided to stay here. And now, I guess I didn't mention earlier, but I do work at the, full-time at the university as well. And, but just the community, the people, the parks and the trails and the infrastructure and everything about it is, has given so much to me, and it's, it feels only right to try to give back. So as for my top issue, probably affordable housing, and looking at the different mechanisms at how we can better achieve that goal, whether it's through land trusts or through public-private partnerships to build additional student housing or housing to accomplish the goals of the, of the, and the plan to end homelessness. But I'd say broadly, that would be my biggest issue. I too am out of time. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks again for the forum. The, I'm running for city council again because I honestly enjoy public service and problem-solving, and it's hard to put I, I honestly enjoy public service and problem-solving, and it's hard to put everything and to, you know, come up with one thing that stands out as the one reason, but I could sum it up as quality of life, maintaining our quality of life, we even have some areas to improve, and a little spin on that I would put, and by, by quality of life, I mean that, you know, we have jobs, we have affordable, how, more affordable houses than what we have now, parks and trails, we can bike without fear of getting hit by a car, you know, hopefully, Third and Russell, I, I want to put a spin on that and say, I feel it's really important for our, our ward, mine and Mr. Childers' ward, to, to have a voice that can speak up for them a lot, because we're a working-class ward, people don't always have a chance to come to meetings, and I really enjoy speaking up for, for our constituents over there.
Well, thank you, there are several issues that we didn't get to cover tonight, they're covered in the questionnaire, they are issues like the ADU debate, the homelessness, homelessness plan, as well as the privacy ordinance, so please take a look at the questionnaire on the website, missoula-democrats.org, and please join me in thanking these great candidates for their service and willingness to continue.